Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Township Committee, September 23rd, 2024. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Two Over Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 11th, 2024. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
You know what, Heidi, let's, hey, Linkcroft Little League, come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, real quick. Double time, double time. Yeah, that's it. Line up right there. It's all right, Coach?
I'll leave you there.
Yeah, sure. All right, go ahead, guys. Turn face the crowd, right there.
Okay. Before we begin with the Linkcroft Little League, we have one special presentation. Peter Engelmann is here tonight, who is the Chairman of the USS New Jersey Submarine Commissioning Ceremony, and we'd like to invite you to please come forward for a presentation to the mayor.
Oh, there we go.
Why don't we head back, and then we'll let Pete do his presentation. Yeah, because I'm not, I don't know what this is, so. Twice, twice.
Yeah. Thank you all for tuning us in. You all, that town, which happened ago, Navy commissioned a USS fast attack submarine for the USS New Jersey.
And they want me, let's get your microphone up.
Oh. Let me show our group first. Let me start again. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to cut into your main. As you all know, I hope you all know, a week ago, we're gonna have to go, the Navy commissioned its newest fast attack submarine, the USS New Jersey, at Naval Weapons Station Earl. It's a one in a, once in a lifetime event, very special event in the life of the ship, and a very special event for the city of New Jersey, and also for this township of Middletown. And I guess I have to go, I just mentioned, I was upstairs in the executive room, and thank the Township, Township Committee, all of you, all of the people, residents of the town, for their wonderful support of the submarine. The sailors were here, they had a great time, the ceremony went off without pitch, everything was wonderful, and quite frankly, it was a testament to the work that everybody done did, and the receptiveness of the town towards the sailors of the Navy. So, we had commissioned an artist to do as a painting of the submarine, which you see in front of us. We actually did a very big one, it was so big it couldn't fit on the submarine, and it's actually gonna go to the State House, because it's called the USS New Jersey. So they get the big one, but we had some others made up, and we said, oh my gosh, who should we give them to? And number one on the list was the Township of Middletown. So, here's a picture. Big guy over here, he painted all work for us, and we really appreciate it. Well, this is the USS New Jersey, driving into Sandy Hook, with some, I think it's doing 12 knots, which is why it has all the wake in front of it. It's got some dolphins in front of it, and mine with the legacy, which is very important to the Navy, are the two previous ships, called the USS New Jersey, BB-16 from World War I, and BB-62, which is now down in Camden, World War II, and others. So this is now your painting, but wherever you would like.
Thank you, Peter. I think. God, God, God. Yeah, let me just say this. Memorial Day of last year, I got an invitation, as the mayor, to head over to Naval Weapons Station Earl, and basically guinea pig, a day on the USS Oregon, which is the sister ship of the USS New Jersey. And I got to go down inside the sub, I got to tour the sub, I got to walk across the USS Cole, which obviously many of you know was the ship that got bombed in Yemen, or Oman, I believe, in 2000, which was directly prior to September 11th. And I boarded this historic ship, and walked across, and stood on top of a nuclear submarine. If you put that on your bingo card, it was not on there for me, as the mayor, to hop on board a nuclear submarine, but I did. And I go down inside and had lunch with several Navy, high-ranking Navy officers, and the idea was to talk about whether or not Middletown and Naval Weapons Station Earl could be the home to the commissioning ceremony of the USS New Jersey. Well, I immediately started doing a couple things, petitioning to get that, and also petitioning to change it to the USS Middletown, and not the USS New Jersey. We got one, we didn't get the other, but we're working on it. But in that process, I got to meet this gentleman right here, in Peter Engelmann, who lived and breathed the commissioning ceremony from that day to today, and is still doing it. The special moment that occurred was when I got off of this bus with the members of Congress, with the Secretary of the Navy, with others, and got up onto that dais, and realized that it was here, after a year and a half's worth of time, and that the moment that this ship, and the legacy that this ship will carry on, from its sisterships, to what it will do in making us proud, but securing the peace of our nation and the world into the future, was surreal at that moment in time. And I couldn't be more proud, more grateful, for the work, the effort that you've done, that Julie did, the entire commissioning team, Captain Holly, everyone that was involved, the crew, from the moment they got here until the moment they left. It was an unbelievable moment for me, and I know for the Township Committee, and for every Middletown resident that was a part of it. It's not often that we get to commission nuclear submarines in town. Ribbon cuttings, yes, nuclear submarines, no. But it was a moment that I will never forget, and I don't think any of us will ever forget. The pride, the patriotism, the love for your country, and knowing that, deep down, while it was a loud and unbelievable experience to be on that, on that base that day, to be at that, at that pier, this ship will go quiet into the night, defending the freedoms that we enjoy today. And the 137 crew are on that ship, not able to speak to their loved ones for months on end, going out to sea in some of the most dangerous, not only parts of this world, but dangerous areas, meaning thousands of feet underwater.
Okay, sorry.
Sound, no, that's what Captain said. And by the way, the speed may be classified, but he told me in the end, after a couple drinks at Belfort Brewery. But let me just say that it was hands down one of the most unbelievable moments in this town's history, and we are so grateful to be the home for every single one of those sailors that will, that climbed aboard it that day, and that climb, will climb aboard it in the future. So this will have a special home here in Middletown. So Peter, thanks for everything you did, and I need to give a special shout out. Laura Madison's in here, the rest of the team is here, Parrish, Shannon, Raven, Gianna, Amy Rose, the entire team was stellar. It would not have gone off as well as it did without their efforts, without their commitment to delivering a great program, and they deserve just as much credit as everybody else, because they did an unbelievable job. So Peter, I want to congratulate you on an unbelievable ceremony, on unbelievable commissioning, and thank you for everything that you did to bring it here to Middletown. So thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
One, two, three, eight. Thank you.
Peter, thanks again. Can we leave this here for the full meeting, or no? No, kidding.
First, I want to finish with the Pledge of Allegiance, we just missed one important.
I'm silent.
Yes.
I wasn't gonna say.
I know, I can't resist.
If you all join me in a moment of silence for serving worldwide.
Defending our Constitution's freedoms and way of life. Thank you.
Certainly appropriate to do that after the USS New Jersey.
So our presentation tonight is for recognizing Little League, Linkcroft Little League All-Stars 12U. I'd like to invite Coaches Todd Ellis, Matt McDougall, and Antonio Sidconan III, and the players to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
Trophy right up to your frigerate, please. Biggest trophy we've ever seen. We don't have that all, I know that you don't want to hit the, but we can, yeah, spread out, spread out, enjoy the moment. Once again, I keep saying it every time we have champions come through here, but I'll tell you, there's nothing better than the sight of a baseball diamond, there's nothing sweeter than the smell of that, of that dirt on that diamond, and seeing it, hearing that ball come off that bat. And every time I would come in to Town Hall, Coach would be standing right there, ready to talk about the effort of you boys. We have not only great kids here and great students, but we got District 19 and Section 3 Little League Champions in the house tonight. Let's give them a round of applause. So I'm sitting there, ready, ready to go, and Coach Sidconan comes to me the day before, and he goes, hey, you can stream it, you can watch it, you can do whatever, you can, and in the end, it was like 18 people spamming me to death on my social media for all these, these fakey ways to watch it. But let me tell you something, your, your boys, your effort, your ability to overcome challenges, to show up in games that you may not have been thought of as the favorite, to go out there and grind every single day, to come out with that trophy right there, sitting on that dais, that's a testament, not just to you, but it's a testament to your coaches, and it's a testament to your parents. You boys deserve so much credit in bringing home that trophy. You deserve credit in going out there each and every day, even when that, when that line drive goes by it at shortstop, even though when maybe you didn't get that throw off over to the first baseman as quickly as you could have, maybe your glove wasn't in the dirt as deep as it could have been, but you were there and prepared. You were prepared to respond, you were prepared to act, you were prepared to be ready for that next pitch. That's what defines a champion, is being prepared for that next pitch, to know that when that splitter is coming in, as to whether or not you should be moving to the left or the right, defines you as an individual and as a player, to understand what exactly that next moment is going to be. You boys have all defined that next moment, because now you get to call yourselves champions, and that deserves a big round of applause and a lot of praise. Not only are you champions one time, you're champions two times, right? All right. You can, you can like, yeah, battle up here, it's all right. Yeah, no problem in the battle. Now you're finally, all of a sudden, we're fired. Coach Sidconan, coaches, I don't know if you want to add anything here, before we read those certificates we have for the boys here.
Thanks, Mayor, Mayor, and everybody else. Mayor Perry, he was texting me at like 10:30 at night, what's the deal with the game? So he was following you guys, the whole town was behind you guys, and he's made us proud, and thank you to the families as well, and you boys, we had a great summer.
We really did, thank you. Yeah. So I want you to do me a favor, keep grinding, keep thanking your coaches, keep thanking your parents, and keep wanting to win. It's okay, in a time when it feels like it's not okay to say you want to go out there and win, I'm telling you, it's okay. Go out there and want to win, go out there and want to prove that you're the best. Go out there every single day, every single at-bat, every single opportunity that you have, with the desire to win, because that's what defines a champion. That's what all of you have defined yourselves as. Your parents are proud, your coaches are proud, Middletown's proud of you. So on behalf of the Township Committee, we have certificates for each of you on winning the 2024 New Jersey District 19 and Section 3 Little League Championships. With your hard work and positive attitude, you and your teammates were able to win two different championships, compete in the state tournament, and place 44th in the entire country. You're entered to learn the importance of teamwork, make friends, and have fun, and we're so grateful that you have represented Middletown like true champions. Congratulations, boys. Let's go. There you go, witch, grab that trophy right there, grab that trophy, bring that in here. Break it down. What do we, what do we break it down?
Linkcroft on three, one, two, three.
All right, let's give it up. Boys, let's line up, take quick pic. All right. All pros, ladies, take it in the back. Good?
So everyone look here and say, Linkcroft on the count of three, okay? One, two, three. And now if you can just say for a few minutes.
One's up, one's up. All right, let's give her a round for her champion.
We're gonna continue on with tonight's agenda. We have approved proclamations for the record, a proclamation recognizing September 28th, 2024, as Middletown Day in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing September 29th, 2024, as Gold Star Mothers and Families Day in the Township of Middletown, and a proclamation recognizing September 2024 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the Township of Middletown. At this time, we have approval of minutes, August 19th, 2024, regular meeting, September 3rd, 2024, workshop meeting, the February 5th, 2024, executive session, the February 20th, 2024, and the March 20th, 2024, executive sessions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have public hearing on proposed ordinances, our first ordinance, 2024-3426, an ordinance authorizing lease agreement with the Township of Middletown, or Middletown Township Historical Society for the Historic Railroad Station.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3426. Don, come on down.
Ready?
Yep.
Thanks. Hi, my name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive in New Monmouth. I know, or I understand, that the 180 group used to use that train station as their meeting location. I was wondering if you know where they're going to be relocated to?
180 Turning Lives Around?
That's correct.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Maybe Brian knows.
Well, Brian's on the board.
I know.
They use Brian's conference room. So they've moved out of the train station.
They have?
Yes.
Okay. I think the Historical Society, did you want to say something, Brian?
In eight years, he's never had a meeting there. Eight years on the board, he never had a meeting at the train station.
They used to before he was on the board.
Okay.
Anyway, I think the use of the train station is an apropos facility for the Historical Society, but I was just wondering, I know, I know people that used to work or volunteer for 180, and I know they met there. So I was just curious as to where they were relocated to.
Apparently, they have a larger facility now.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Groovy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Any other member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3426? Pete, good?
On behalf of the Middletown Historical Society, I just want to thank everyone. We plan on shortly getting a, what, 2020, for 2026, we're gonna have a display for America 250, Middletown in the Revolution, and we are also working with Middletown 250 as well. So again, I just wanted to thank everybody for approving it, and look forward to working with everyone, so.
Thank you. Pete, thanks for your leadership, Tom's leadership, and the boards, and certainly getting this done. I think it's a great location, high-traffic location, that'll certainly be able to put on display a lot of the materials that you have preserved and protected for so many decades as, as an organization, so I want to thank you for that leadership.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3426? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt this resolution, ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have ordinance 2024-3427, an ordinance amending Chapter 84-10 of the Code of the Township of Middletown, governing special duty rates for police officers.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3427? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading.
For any member of the public that doesn't have a copy of the agenda, they're sitting right up here, if you'd like one, okay? No problem. Right, right here, at the corner, right there.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, Heidi.
Okay, our next ordinance for public hearing, we have 2024-3428, a salary ordinance repealing and replacing introduced ordinance number 2024-3425.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3428? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. At this time, we have 2024-3429, an ordinance providing funding for various capital purposes for the Township of Middletown, and appropriating $2,200,000 for such purpose.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3429? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our final ordinance for public hearing, we have 2024-3430, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $1,930,000 for various capital improvements by and for the Township of Middletown and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $1,833,500 in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2024-3430? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Tonight, we have introduction of proposed ordinances, 2024-3431, an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 2024-3424, adopting the 325 Highway 36 redevelopment plan consisting of Block 238, lots five and six, and a portion of the Central Avenue right-of-way.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Katz.
Yes.
Kratz, excuse me. Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading, with a public hearing to be held October 21st, 2024. Next, we have 2024-3432, an ordinance authorizing the granting of a deed of dedication and perpetual mitigation area easement on portions of township-owned property described as Block 121 Lot 1 and Block 276 Lot 48 pursuant to the Rauten Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane and Storm Damage Reduction Project, Port Monmouth, New Jersey, Phase 2 Contract 1.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading, with a public hearing to be held October 7th, 2024. Next, we have 2024-3433, an ordinance authorizing and accepting deed of open space easement from County of Monmouth for Normandy Park, Block 901 Lot 3.
Motion to introduce.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held October 7th, 2024. Next, we have a consent agenda. Township committee would like to adopt resolutions 24-243 through 24-240, uh, 24-264 and holding 24-262 for a separate vote.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have Resolution 24-262, a resolution releasing the performance guarantee and safety and stabilization bond for JLV Holdings LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Recuse.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass Resolution 24-262. At this time, we have one discussion item, pickleball courts.
All right. Discussion item on, on tonight's agenda, uh, regarding the pickleball courts at Tindal. Obviously, that project is ongoing. The second phase of it, um, has already begun. The asphalt removal, uh, obviously, courts one through eight, um, are paved, um, and ready to go. That consisted of eight tennis courts, as everybody is aware. Um, the second set, if you haven't, uh, driven through Tindal, I drove through today, actually, the fencing is down on the second set of eight courts, um, with the asphalt and the foundation set to be, um, removed, uh, beginning on Wednesday, I believe. I think we're going to do the ten, the, uh, basketball courts at the same time, right? So the, uh, question, um, through this process was, a- at the time we approved this, um, the, uh, the plan presented to the township committee was of six pickleball courts. Um, but after discussions amongst, um, uh, pickleball leagues, uh, our engineering firms, um, o- others, we discussed the, uh, possibility of placing eight pickleball courts there. Um, there was, uh, points raised, um, by our administrator, Tony Mercantante, regarding, um, uh, potential issues that could result, uh, with, uh, parking. Um, but the, the reason and rationale of bringing it up tonight is the township committee did approve it with six. Um, Janet is here, uh, and, and she can provide additional information, but it would be my recommendation, um, that with, given the fact that you can, you can fit the eight courts, um, on the, what was the four front tennis courts, um, that eight pickleball courts, um, i- is appropriate with the understanding that we may have to at some time in the future take a look at parking and i- if that becomes an issue, but we also shouldn't limit the courts and the painting of those courts, um, to not reflect those eight, um, pickleball courts. So the reason that this is on for discussion tonight is so that the township committee can understand that, um, there is, uh, uh, an idea to change and up the six originally approved by the TC to eight pickleball courts. Janet, I don't know if you want to add anything that I might have missed?
You didn't miss anything, and you said everything I was going to, so thank you. Yes. Um, I guess the, the biggest concern too, and we'll, we're, we're going to have to play this a little bit by ear, is the parking issue. Um, when you do the math and the number of people that could play, potentially, that court's going to get filled, the parking area is going to get filled up. Um, talking with, uh, Ted Maloney, the township engineer, we talked about some other possible solutions for that, placing signs, hopefully working with the Board of Ed, and pushing people to park at north when school's not in session, providing a potential beacon, uh, pedestrian beacon, beacon on, um, Tindal Road. But unfortunately, we're hope, we're going to play this one a little bit by ear to monitor the situation. Um, but we think going with eight is the right course.
Yeah, I, I, uh, agree. Um, and, uh, I hope that the township committee, um, has no issue. Um, I, I'm not sure if we need to vote on that, Brian? Heidi? We need to vote on this, or... Okay. Is there any comments, questions, concerns about move, hang on one second, sir, about moving from six pickleball courts that were originally discussed and, and agreed to here at a meeting to the eight pickleball courts?
I, I thought you could strike two pickleball courts per tennis court, right? One on each side?
Well, on existing tennis courts, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no issue.
I'm sorry, Janet. Do, how many parking spaces are at the dog park in addition?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me, but it's 102 total for Tindal, so I didn't parcel it out between what's in front of tennis, what's in front of dog, the dog park, and what's in front of, uh, basketball courts. 102.
102 for the park.
For the whole park, uh, yeah.
Any other questions from the township committee?
I just think it's going to be important for the pickleball community to communicate with either y- you, mayor, or Janet and her team, uh, to the ongoing...
I think it's going to be important for the pickleball community to, to either communicate with the mayor's office and/or Janet and her team, uh, to keep us up to speed as to what the parking situation is, and that the pickleball community take a proactive approach to doing, to helping to solve that problem, knowing that that's the problem coming into this. Yeah. Um, okay. Any other questions from the TC? So the TC has no issues going from six pickleball courts at Tindal to the eight pickleball courts, correct? Okay. All right. So Janet, you have your instructions. Eight pickleball courts at Tindal. All right. There's, there's a public portion at the end. A- after township committee comments, any member of the public can speak. Yes. The discussion is amongst the, the governing body. Sir?
Sir, you're going to have to wait until we're in the public portion.
Public discussion yet.
Oh, that's a good question.
No. Okay. Uh, Committeeman Clark?
I'd like to congratulate the Lynn Croft Little League. Um, I got, I got the privilege of seeing a few of their games and, uh, the caliber of play that they delivered on the field and, uh, the teams that they played against was exceptional. Um, we also had the opportunity to participate in USS New Jersey, and I'm not going to talk too much about it other than what a special opportunity it was for myself, um, my family and, and the rest of this community to be a part of. It was, uh, truly remarkable. Um, and one of the, one of the reasons that, um, Middletown is so special, I got, I got the opportunity to speak to a bunch of the people on the ship, and, uh, they had never seen a reception in a community quite like they got from us. Um, then they've been to parts of the country, uh, all different parts, on the East Coast, the West Coast, and, and they'd never, ever felt so welcome anywhere. And it was the overwhelming, uh, conversation. It was just, it was really awesome. Other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. So I want to take this time to, to thank you for, personally for your leadership in getting the USS New Jersey commissioned here at Naval Weapons Station Earl in Middletown. Make no mistake, um, without your involvement and, uh, leadership with regard to that, it wouldn't have happened here. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, and it, it's certainly a, a great effort, a great effort in representing Middletown and the state of New Jersey. Um, secondly, with regard to the, uh, the, uh, 12-year-old, uh, boys that won the championship, um, my, my son just turned 13, and I can't get him to listen to me for two or three minutes straight. To get, uh, to get, to get a group of 12-year-old boys to play on a team and win a championship is just an amazing feat for those boys and for the, and for the coaches. And it's a great representation of Middletown. So, um, so congratulations again to Middletown. You've put us on the map once again. That's all I have for tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Committeeman Sedembreno. Committeewoman Kratz?
Thank you, mayor. So echoing the sentiments also of my fellow committee members, just wanted to also thank you, mayor, for, for your leadership in bringing the USS New Jersey here. It was quite an experience to be able to share with my family and my two young sons, and it was, it was really something that happens once in a lifetime, and I surely will never forget being able to take the tour of the sub and, and spending time and meeting the crew. So it was really quite lovely and, and, and certainly, um, really felt so wonderful and proud that it happened here in Middletown, and, and it was, it was fabulous. And also, thank you also, and congratulations to our young men who are up here this evening. It's quite an accomplishment and, and always really special to have our young athletes here in town hall. So really sweet. Um, also wanted to just give a quick shout, um, to members of our honor guard for PBA 124, our police officers who completed a weeks-long program and graduated. Um, so it, it provides them with, um, even more training to honor our fallen. Um, so really, congratulations to all of them. It's, it's really quite an accomplishment. They, they did this course with other members in the state, and it was, it was really something to see. So congratulations to all of their hard work.
Thank you, Committeewoman Kratz. Deputy Mayor?
Mayor, this guy has two planks here. The mayor did an amazing job. I just want to tell everyone, our team, the best. I mean, look at the flags, look at the patriotism, uh, the last week in the town was just, just amazing. Uh, Peter, I know he left, though. Is he over here still or no? Um, an amazing job. Um, trying to, uh, the day, the day I did a tour on the sub, I was, uh, a little nervous going down, and, uh, he grabbed me and said, "We're going to be fine," and I, uh, was able to complete it. But, uh, just, just amazing. I'm very appreciative for him for that and for what he did. Um, Little League team, hats off. We truly have the best sports players in town, in the state, so, uh, um, great job, guys. And, uh, we've got a big event this weekend, right, mayor?
Yeah.
1 o'clock, Middletown Day. Hope all of our tennis players and pickleball players are going to be there. All right.
I'd love to see that.
I did at Normandy when we opened the parks. I did. Think it was pretty good, too.
Janet, we're definitely doing that. Pickleball competition.
Absolutely.
All right.
All right. That's all I have, mayor.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, the, the, a- a- as I mentioned, the USS New Jersey, uh, commissioning was, was just a, a highlight, the highlight of a lifetime, the, the opportunity of a lifetime for our town, uh, and, uh, so grateful to have had an opportunity to come together with people from across the country, this from the Secretary of the Navy to the governor, um, to everyone involved. Um, it was truly one of those moments that you sit back and you are just so grateful to be an American, grateful to be, uh, a, a resident of the greatest country in the world, and to have free men and women willing to put their lives on the line and, and do what they do on a daily basis. And that, to me, is the, the greatest feeling you can have, is seeing, uh, those individuals run aboard that ship, um, in an opportunity to... Okay. An opera, I, I didn't realize that, doing that while we're talking about men and women serving aboard a ship that have to be quiet for months on the end, and we can't get two seconds to thank them for their service. But, um, the, uh, the, the men and women aboard that, that boat are heroes, and they are Middletown residents because they commissioned from this port, because they commissioned from this pier, and, uh, I'll forever be grateful for that opportunity. Um, Middletown Day starts at 1 o'clock. A little different this year. Middletown Day begins at 1 o'clock, Croydon Hall. Uh, we have fireworks that are kicking off just after 7 o'clock. Uh, the state police have, they're helicopter flying in. They, we have, uh, just so many great activities. Janet and the team do an amazing job each year, and the fact that we've been able to transform this into, uh, now, uh, more, a little bit of an evening program that incorporates those fireworks, has, uh, you know, a, a concert at the last hour before, uh, those fireworks kickoff. Uh, it's, it's great, um, great to see happening. Mayor's 5K, it's, uh, Don, thank you for bringing up 180 Turning Lives Around because the Mayor's 5K this year, um, which is not just a 5K, it is walking and, um, even for me, going backwards, I feel like, sometimes. Um, but it is benefiting an unbelievable cause. We are so fortunate in Middletown to have a great organization in Monmouth County, a great organization, and, uh, from Liz Graham, uh, and, and everybody at 180, the board, um, not just because Nelson's sitting here next to me, but th- they do an unbelievable job. I wish organizations like 180 didn't have to exist in taking care of women and children who find themselves in horrible situations at home, um, but we're, I'm certainly grateful that they do. So, uh, 180 Turning Lives Around is the beneficiary of this year's, uh, Mayor's 5K. Yesterday, I was at a different 5K and just want to give Andre Verdone, um, Infinite Love for Kids and the Love for Luca 5K, uh, a big shout out for all the money that they raised, um, in, uh, once again, raising awareness for pediatric cancer. Luca Iacono died, um, six years ago, um, to pediatric cancer, and year after year, they come back, and his, his mom and dad and his grandmother Claire, they, they come back each and every year to understanding that there is certainly a tremendous amount of pain under the surface for all of them, for everyone that got to meet Luca Iacono. He was a special little boy that no child should ever have to deal with what he dealt with, but he has inspired thousands of people to keep the fight going, to keep the fight alive, regardless of whether his body still sits among us, whether he still walks among us, his spirit is still alive. I feel it every day. I, I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to meet Luca several times, and I couldn't be more proud that the Middletown community, year after year, comes out to support him, his family, and the, the cause to raise money for Luca Iacono. So I want to thank all of them for everything that they did. It was a, a, a very moving 5K once again. Um, with that, I'll open it up for public comments. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Jim, come on down. You're already here.
Good evening, folks. Uh, Jim Morant, 26, Hillier Circle, Middletown. Um, I came here for the sole purpose of discussing the six to eight pickleball courts. So having that in the rearview mirror, I would just be remiss if I left without thanking, first of all, Ms. Janet Delight for putting up with me for the last four and a half, five years. Um, thanks, Janet. Uh, this wouldn't have been possible and would not have happened without her understanding and her patience with me. And to the mayor, um, it's just refreshing. I spoke to the mayor a couple of weeks ago about this concern, and he not only listened to me, he went over to Tindal to see the problem and then got back to me. Uh, and I would be remiss, Mr. Mayor, if I didn't thank you personally for, uh, not only listening to me, but going over and getting back to me. With that, I am on record now. I am not the voice of pickle, the voice of pickleball in Middletown anymore. I'm off the clock. Thanks very much. Good evening, guys.
I, I, I want to, I, I do want to, I, I'd be remiss not to thank you, Jim. Um, there are, um, individuals that certainly, uh, come to these meetings and they are, you know, they are adamant in their positions, and I love that. Uh, I love the, the fight that people have for the things that they believe in the most. And when you called me and I went out there and called up our engineers and asked them to meet me out there with the tape measure and start looking at, uh, how many feet will be in between these six pickleball courts? And, and i- it's, it's easy on a piece of paper to look at a plan and say, "Yep, this is good. This is, this is great." Uh, it's another to go out there and say, "Okay, yeah, we can, we can fit another two pickleball courts in here, and we can make, take that next step, and we can work to try and, and meet the needs of our residents." And yes, there, there will be things that we have to do and, and things that we'll have to deal with in the future. That's certainly true. Tony outlined, Tony Mercantante outlined those. Um, but it would also be a shame not to take advantage of the space that we do have. So as long as we can do it safely, as long as we can do it, uh, in the, in the best way possible, um, we are always going to, as a township committee, strive to meet that expectation. So Jim, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your calls, your text messages, and your, your advocacy for pickleball in Middletown, even though you're off the clock now.
I heard there's a meeting. My name is John Mauro. I'm a, uh, I've been living in Middletown for, uh, is it okay for me to come up?
Can you?
But I, I, if I'm, this is inappropriate. Tell me.
You just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's John Mauro, M-A-U-R-O.
Yep.
209 Yulin Road. 209 Yulin Road, Red Bank, but at Middletown. You understand. The only reason I'm here is I play pickleball every weekend at Normandy Park with all my friends and it's, just wanted to say that it's almost a walking distance from my house and there's at least 40 people, old people, I'm 79 and I could beat a lot of these younger folks here, you know that, too. All I'm here to say is that it's sort of like Cannon Terry grassroots started the pickleball activities that take place there every weekend. And all I want to say is I heard that you might be closing that down and there are certainly other places we could play pickleball. I understand you're actually developing other facilities, but all I have to say, this is a special place. We're all older, I'm one of the oldest there and we all get along and you don't find a grassroots startup of a bunch of old folks showing up, getting together every weekend and having a ball. And all I have to say is I'd hate to see you close that place because I love it every weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the, yes, sir.
Hi, Tom Zaner, H. Anowich Court. So Mayor Perry, I was just wondering if you, I had sent an email about a week ago to you. I had sent an online form submission earlier in the month. I had called the number listed on the website. I think Shannon Miller had taken a voicemail. I spoke with her last week. I haven't heard anything back. I was just wondering if you had received any of those communications?
Well, I actually just did get back from a trip overseas, part of a transatlantic Mayor's Conference over in Germany, but I'm happy to, I'll certainly take a look and give you a buzz back. Shannon, I'll certainly.
Sure. Are you aware of the ethics complaint? That's currently pending?
Oh, okay.
On the vice of council, no discussion about this matter.
Okay. I'll discuss with Mr. Nelson, but on the vice of council, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to speak about it in public.
Okay, I was just hoping that you and the committee would help advocate for transparency and accountability.
Well, let me, let me speak to Mr. Nelson because as he stated on the vice of council, I'm not gonna be able to speak.
Understandable, understandable, understandable.
All right.
You will, you will at least follow up in some capacity. Thank you.
In whatever capacity Brian says I'm allowed to follow up in, I will follow up in.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You got it.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Rich Tarabor. I live at 34 Ivy Hill Road in.
We'll get it for you, don't worry.
I live at 34 Ivy Hill Road in Middletown, Red Bank. First of all, I want to thank the towns for their support in the 9/11 Memorial 5K. Joe Copriotti was a good friend and the annual event is pretty cool. Thank you. Also, thank you for fixing the lights at the courts at Normandy. It is a huge improvement. We can actually see what we're doing now. That's awesome. I don't, I couldn't see the documentation in the packet, what the change order for Tyndale is for other than unforeseen circumstances. Could somebody explain what the change?
I didn't hear what you.
The change order in tonight's packet doesn't describe what the money is being spent on at Tyndale other than unforeseen circumstances.
Yeah.
Is there any more specificity to that?
Janet?
Yeah, we actually increased the drainage that went around the second courts. We had, we went from a smaller pipe to a bigger pipe.
Cool.
And that's really simplistic terms.
Yes, I understand. I just, I couldn't, unforeseen circumstances didn't help me understand it, so that was pretty good, thank you.
More drainage always good.
Especially after the dog park saga. Is there a way the town council can enforce the parking rec rules at the parks? So for us, we get a permit to play pickleball, yet we have confrontations with people that are giving private instructions at the court without permits? Where we had a, my daughters both played soccer at Middletown, so this is not a swipe at Middletown Soccer, but we've had an issue or two with tournaments and we were told we can't play because of parking constraints and I had to get the police involved in that.
Yep.
So is there some way we can kind of?
Janet and I have had extensive discussions about this, certainly. It's not the first time it's come up because we tend to get trainers that are claiming that they're training their nieces and nephews instead of really, you know, being forthright when it comes to what's actually happening.
The really good news is we have our permits and we show them our permits.
Yeah.
The tuckers between the legs and off they go.
The, one of the ordinances that we passed tonight actually makes one of our field coordinators a full-time position because we needed the extra enforcement to ensure that that is being abided by. She was, she was a part-timer, but it was necessary to move her up to that full-time position to ensure that not just in the hours that fit, but all the time that permits are being, are being captured, permits are being gotten and utilized by the individuals that are requesting those permits and certainly ensuring also that safety issues that may come up, a net comes loose, the wheel on a goalpost comes off and can potentially rip the carpet on the, on the, on the field. All those things are necessary for somebody to be consistently monitoring and we felt like it was the right time to move forward with having somebody go out there on a daily basis, especially on the weekends when you have individuals that, you know, at peak hours are coming, in and off, teams are coming on and off that, those fields over at Normandy and other places.
So it also happens on the soccer courts, we actually, soccer fields, we actually see coaches there on a pretty regular basis, but we're there about 15 hours a week at Normandy. We average between 24 and 50 of us at a time. Our groups are between 1,000 and 100, depending on which group we're talking to. We've got a pretty good thing going right now and getting it tuned a little better is never a bad thing. So again, the lights are awesome. Getting more pickleball courts at Tyndale was awesome. I think we're doing really well moving forward. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
Hi, my name is John McCabe, 799 Port Monmouth Road. I probably don't need a microphone, but I grew up in a family of eight boys, so I'm used to yelling a little bit. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, we appreciate the executive decisions you've made on, you know, the eight courts, you know, that's exciting. Right now, we are playing in Normandy. We have heard a little bit about Normandy not being allowed to use pickleball in the oncoming years, that maybe it would be shut down to pickleball and only be a tennis-only venue. Any thoughts by anybody, are those just malicious, you know, conversations?
No decisions have been made about that. We're working to get pickleball at Tyndale, do the pickleball courts at McMahon and it really has to be a decision that's made at the proper time to ensure that we're not hurting ourselves in terms of jamming up parks or doing anything like that. Those are decisions that are gonna have to be made in the future when we can identify where there's a need and where there's not a need. It has to be a constant, fluid conversation to ensure that we're making the right decisions at the different, because between now and next year, every tennis court and basketball court in town will be repaved. So you're talking about every single, we've already awarded the basketball courts, that's why we were talking about the, we've already, I should rephrase that. We have already set forth the plan to repave the basketball courts and next year, the idea is to repave all of our tennis courts throughout town, every single one of them, not including the ones we've already redone. So it has to be a fluid conversation, I think.
Great, so I may add a little bit more to that if you don't mind, you know, and we appreciate it. Just being there, you've heard from John Mauro a little bit earlier, you know, him being 79, being able to walk over to the course. There are other local members in that area, you know, that are capable of doing that or riding a bicycle, you know, who may not be able to get over to Tyndale or other parks. That being said, there's also lights there. You may not believe it, but most of us or some of us seniors do stay up past 7:00 PM and we don't mind playing.
This is gonna be one of my favorite township committee meetings.
And we don't mind playing under the lights, you know, it's a little bit cooler in the evening, you know, so, you know, playing from that five to eight o'clock, 8:30 timeframe, you know, is a good thing for us. We haven't heard anything about lights being, you know, brought into Tyndale, you know, we know that's an extra expense, things like that, maybe it's down the road or in the future, but putting our best foot forward, even thinking about Normandy, still being able to play there a couple nights a week, you know, that's a good thing for us, so we appreciate that. Something else with regards to Normandy, I'll put it to you simply this way. My girlfriend, who also plays pickleball, not here tonight, sometimes she'll go down to the ladies' room, let's call it the outhouse down the end of the park. That, that being said, sometimes she doesn't return for 45 minutes and I ask her, "What took so long?" She says.
This is a children's show, sir, let's keep.
Well, it will be, it'll be simple. He simply says, I appreciate that, Mayor, and I enjoy a sense of humor, as you know, but she stands down there handing out toilet paper to the kids, the soccer player. Nope, not telling it, no, no commodity, but bottom line is, you know, it's not a good scene down there, okay? It's filthy, dirty.
We've been exploring possibilities of how to upgrade, I'll say, the, and one incredibly expensive way of dealing with this, but there's, the, we've always explored and had a great idea of let's build a bathroom facility over there. As all of you know, Normandy sits way at the bottom of a hill, obviously. Well, I don't need to tell you which way it flows, it's not uphill.
Now, I knew it's not a children's, it's not.
Yeah. But the, so we have been trying to find cost-effective alternatives to potentially look at for Normandy Park. Certainly, this is not the first time that someone has told me this and it's certainly something that, of course, I'm willing to take a look at alongside the Township Committee.
Thank you, and we appreciate that and I'm sure everybody appreciates that, which only now brings us to Tyndale. Any restrooms? What's the thought process for restrooms in Tyndale?
Janet?
I'm gonna ask Colleen Lap, just kidding.
For more money?
Yeah, 100%, absolutely, yes. So one of the other things, too, one of the other gentlemen asked me about the change order and I'm sorry because I forgot one part of the change order at Tyndale is that we actually put conduit, we ran the conduit for electricity around the perimeters of the second set of eight. So lights are not coming tomorrow or next year, but we ran the conduit now, so in the future, we can add lights to that area. If you've been through Tyndale recently, you hopefully have seen that we cleared out the trees and grass that are in front of what I'm trying to push for the name of the Tyndale Park Field House. There's an old building there that has bathrooms in it. They need a full renovation, so we're not there yet, but we're getting much closer. So the hope is to have that, there's a snack stand in there, it was a pavilion area that we closed up, so we want to kind of put a little love and attention into that and bring back those bathrooms. Like I said, we talked about the drainage from the change order, we're actually adding water, there's water there right now, we have to increase the line, so they're doing that now, too, so they're bringing the water from the corner of where the road turns up to the building. So it's, it's coming. I know Christmas is too, but it's coming.
No, I appreciate that, you know, that's why we just want to make mention of it and hear your, that you hear our concerns and thoughts.
Went with, if you, I don't know if you stopped by today or yesterday, but if you go by, it is the most visible the building has ever been now at this point. I mean, it is like, where did this building come from? It was kind of like in the woods, it felt like, a little bit, but, but it is, as Janet has mentioned, certainly a discussion that we think, you know, possibly next year, we can take a look at doing the amenities that would be required, that would allow for your girlfriend to not have to sell toilet paper, allegedly, but.
Karen will.
Does she have a permit for that, by the way?
Karen will appreciate that. No, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Let me just make sure of one thing, anybody else, any from the comments, I made a couple of things. Brenda, you have wanted to say something? No? I did want to thank you.
Jim Moran comes up and says, "I'm no longer the face of pickleball anymore. I found the new president of the Middletown Pickleball League."
I have more notes, but you've taken care of everything, I really appreciate. But I will tell you this, though, from, you've done a lot, you mentioned veterans tonight and, you know, how committed the township is to it. Please join us sometime for pickleball Memorial Day, Veterans Day. We do a raising of the flags, singing of the National Anthem, God bless America. You're welcome, you know, all to join us for that at some point in time.
I'd love to.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. How are you today?
I have written down here, so my name is Diane Lindy, I'm 152 Jumping Brook in Lynn Croft. We wrote this letter and I think that you all received it, so I guess you might as well see the face behind the letter. I wrote this letter, we are writing this letter on behalf of the people. Do you mind if I read it? I'll go quick.
Five minutes is yours.
Most of, thanks, most of the residents are over 60 that play pickleball at Normandy on weekend mornings. We have been playing pickleball at Normandy Park on weekend mornings for the past three years. It's never been a problem. I have several friends that live in that area that pass by there almost every day. That park has always been empty and they always commented on how sad it was that that park was always empty, never used until pickleball started. Now, it's packed on weekend mornings and I think one night during the week. The tennis courts are always empty. On the rare occasion when someone comes to play tennis, we move over and give them the court. In fact, a few times on weekends, we wanted to video that because people would come with their tennis rackets and, you know, maybe whoever they're playing with and we gladly give them the court. You know, they said, "Is that available?" And we move our nets and give them the court. It's only one court and it rarely happens, that's one of the points. So now that park is being used. I mean, it's amazing how it's being used now between all the soccer, which is unbelievable, as you said, that there's no bathrooms there. I mean, there's a zillion kids playing soccer and then we're all there. I would love for some of you to come on the weekend mornings and just see what's going on. There's like at least 40 people there playing every weekend morning. Let's see, I'm not gonna get into this. This was, you know, I said, "Why is the fast and growing sport in America?" As you know, there have been many people in Monmouth County and Middletown that have embraced the sport. It's a great exercise, a great way to meet new people. Most of the people play pickleball at other parks and facilities in Monmouth County, but a group of people come to Normandy on weekend mornings. In a short time, great relationships have been formed. It's a supportive group that is welcoming to new people and brings the community together. Most of the people are seniors that live in the surrounding area and never would have met if it was not for this sport. Just trying to say like what a community thing this has become and brought so many people in Middletown together. The people that play at Normandy are very, oh, you don't need to know that, let's say. No, I don't want to waste your time with, let's see, there is always group, just how we play, how we, it's open play, that type of thing, you don't need to know that, just come on the weekend morning and see. But there's always a group of people sitting outside the fence socializing. At Christmas, we had a party with 76 people that play regularly at Normandy. In the summer, we had a party at the Red Banks Elks, we had 90 people that regularly play at Normandy. So it really has become quite the community, we just don't want you to take Normandy away as far as pickleball. You see where I'm going with that? Oh, the biggest, the biggest point, I mean, there's all over the country, as you know, everybody's fighting about pickleball because of the noise. Normandy, it doesn't disturb anyone. There's no houses near there. You know, it's down, as you said, it's not disturbing anyone. So that, and we're not even asking, like so many towns have, Haslett has it, Falls has it, the list goes on, we're not even asking for designated pickleball courts. All we want is for the lines to remain on those tennis courts.
Well, you are, you are getting designated pickleball courts.
Not, well, we're talking about at Normandy. So at Normandy, we're not even asking for designated pickleball courts. All we want is for the lines to remain on those tennis courts.
Tonight's discussion was simply to increase the pickleball courts from six to eight on the plan. That was it. It was all we discussed tonight was to increase the number of pickleball courts from six to eight.
We're worried because we've heard rumors that they plan on resurfacing the courts at Normandy for tennis only.
And as I previously stated, too, I don't know who, this is a fluid conversation that has to happen.
So I guess we just want to let you know.
Understood, understood.
That's, that's basically it in a nutshell. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the eight courts at Tyndale.
Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Crats.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedambrino.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybeau.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody. Thank you all.